All right, we're calling to order our USD 201, board meeting, January 14, 2025. We'll start with our roll call.
Dr. Hoover?
Yeah.
Whitney Rogers? Jessica Redonia?
Here.
Carlos Avia?
Here.
Angela Steckity? Kevin Merron?
Here.
Leah Canover?
Here. Well, rise for the like the other two. I just stood to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We are trying to proceed to close session. So the chair will entertain a motion to enter close session to discuss personnel issues, sleeping discipline, and the sale of lease of real properties.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Merron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Dr. Hoover?
Yes. Six thirty nine. Proceeding with through our agenda for open session of our board meeting. We'll move to the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the close session of the December 17th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're moving to public comment. And our first set of speakers is from Capel. Zoe Edmonton, Rhea Paris. Hey. Just Mr. Bartista.
Hello, okay, so Zoe and I are the co-presidents of Capel. And this year, we want to talk about our conference, our returning conference, but saying, last year, we talked about still bridges. Well, this year, our new theme is the cultural program. Where we see how Asian cultures intertwine and overlap. And it's going to be a really good space for people to build community, to talk to each other. And we're, we want to invite you all to attend. We have a couple of wonderful speakers coming here as well, so we will let you know that. And by, so we have the long Sid in our whip shirt and luckily sponsored to the social family, but our keynote speaker, we have various things to have, your team and Sawyer join us to be our conference keynote. And currently, as some committee notes, he is the Chair of the Illinois State Board of Education. And he's, of course, won several awards and we're very happy to have him and I'm excited to have you at your conference. We also have a few other speakers and workshops. For example, we have, she's only challenging, is actually a alum at Westmont High School. And she is actually a grad student at MIT right now and also works, she's an intern at NASA and worked on with the Mars space rover projects. So we're also very happy to have her, her topic speaking on how it's like being a woman who's also minority in a field that's predominantly white males. And we are also very happy to have Bega Cheek, who is director of the Native American Cultural Center, who arrived and told us about Asia and Wales. And we're also very happy to have Cassie Sun, who is journalism student at Northwestern. And she was also one of the first high school student ambassadors for the project, very Asian foundation, who also worked with them past. And we're so happy to have her back here again. And a new addition we have also is the Japanese Cultural Center, which we actually just connected recently. They offer a lot of classes and that offer like arts and skills of Japanese culture. And they're going to be joining us for work on. So I'm lucky you would like to attend to be a very womanified you. I hope I did some contact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Sawyer and he was super excited. So one of the first things we spoke about was Capel. He was so excited about coming here. So he's like, have you heard of this? So we're very famous. He is super excited to work with you guys and.
Thank you. This is awesome.
February 1st?
Yes, February.
Starting at what time?
Um, starting at 8:00 AM.
Is it open to the public?
We put them on, can you see first?
Yes.
And, and we are happy to also, I've done a really good job. The club has done a great job of raising money. And so, and so we are also very pleased to be able to offer our school board complimentary registration. So if you don't mind, I'll give that to you today as some information. So I'm about to have him, thank you.
No, fucking, because I might.
It's true.
You guys have some good connections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What a great agenda you've got together.
Thank you.
This is honestly.
This is.
Really is, we're very proud of you. Outstanding work.
Can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Charlie Johnson.
Hi, I'm Charlie Johnson. I'm a sophomore at Westmore High School. I'm here to speak on my opinion of the whole matter of the referendum on the students and sector. I have been in the district for about 10 years as a student. And decisions like this have made a, have been in the past, like out of the blue like this, like the Miller and Man combination, but that was extreme. This decision will have about a 5% increase from last year's taxes, which may not seem like a lot, but I think the big difference has come in from, they're way five. This year has been to, with the economy and society has, with all my parents out there, we live for tuition and for my brothers and to go to school. But taxes are already getting so high, they're asking another source of funding instead of just take the schools, local schools. With this increase, my family is going to have to pay another $70,000 in the district to afford a 4,000 or even 5,000. There are some random, with the referendum, we should explore different funding choices as to, as a whole, with the school or with the grand budget on Capel. To compare other schools, let's say Davis Grove, Guards and Westmore High School. Even though you cannot compare the size, the point compared, how they use their functions and, and the ARJ. Westmont, I feel does not use up on the ARK. For example, I had swimming for a semester and this entire quarter that I had a swimming before was broken, so I had to jump. Considering the price was a hefty 40 grand, but the entire community uses the pool as swim tanks from other schools too. I feel that it could have been much shared with everyone who relies on it. And then considering North is a much older school and, even though they have, they have more effort, they keep up with the maintenance as they are referring to a community and a district that listens and respects change. As with Westmont, the population gives that school a million dollars free and still cannot exit on to your, your, why should we get more money to let the problem sink longer? Even with, even with school space, I feel other schools like Memorial or North as a more environment for students. That pushing the schools' achievements or whatever in, in students' lives every year. Other school districts, I feel they listen to the power before they want to change. I feel this is not happening to one. Instead of was listening, Westmont will just spread the agenda down here. And now I'm listening to people. As much as I love Westmont right now, I do not feel, I don't know where this community is going. Going past this referendum, most schools live, like, need to be able to listen to that the student input across the board from elementary all the way up to high school. Everyone needs a voice in this environment. I'm not asking for a lot, but please fix the problem, Jerry, how it's not fair to us.
Thank you. Thank you. And so we just have that to public comments day. We'll proceed with the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We don't have personal recommendations at this time, but we do have approval of additional December 2024 expenditure report. So I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers? Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Merron?
Yes.
So we're going to move to our discussion. Keep on as one. Or should I go to number two?
Go to two first.
Okay. So I'm going to move to number two, the location committee recap. So I'll get that. And then we'll return back to our budget staffing timeline.
Roll chat.
It can hold, right? Do you suppose one man?
And enough, she can take yours, Colonel, as she was for. And enough.
No, 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 the microphone. Tap or see if it's on. If it'll stay on.
But yeah. Okay, there it is. Right there.
So I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to meet with the location committee. It was a very good process. I think it brought out some of the negative ideas that you're going to need to deal with on this road in the next couple of months. And just to kind of give you a recap, those have been the work there. Superintendent Paulman gave a really good recap on the different locations that you had looked into that just weren't feasible, right? So then we tried to focus on just the two properties, the Oakmont and the Blackhawk properties. And really good discussion. You do have a few residents that are upset because it's not sexually located. But again, you tried, there's not a lot of places in Westmont that are just saying, come and build here, right? So, so I think you narrowed it down to the two most feasible properties. Having said that, we then started doing a SWAC analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. And that, with the strengths and the weaknesses, really a lot of great conversation. And then the opportunities and the challenges going to be asked of you and what to be done, right? So I felt that everyone really got to give a lot of the input. And Jack and I kind of looked at each other and he's like, I was reading the room and I'm like, you know what? We need to have a vote, right? And it was very successful. We had 22 posted notes, vote for the Blackhawk properties, as well as we had one for Oakmont. And then we had about two or three that said neither, because they wanted in central town, the center of town. Or they just didn't like it, period, right? So they just chose not to know, just fine. Because you're going to have that on April 1st too. So I think it was a really good.
Let's see if I know. It goes in the flame. Let's do it.
Very good. So obviously, you're very familiar with both properties, right? The biggest, the two things that have come out of both properties is your traffic control. So no matter which property you pick, you've got to start talking about how you're going to ease the traffic and flow of traffic, not only cars, but students and how they're getting from one part of the school to another, or whatever the case may be, how they're getting to school. That was a huge topic, but that's for both locations. The Oakmont, they're really struggling and we kind of spoke about it tonight, that the administrators and the teachers, it's really tough that there's four stories there, right? A week ago, they talked about putting lipstick on Oakmont, to be very honest with you, because they're just, you're gutting it. It's a business facility. It's made for adults, it's not made for little feet and legs to go up and down for flights of stairs. So that was really the drawback when it came to Oakmont. When it came to the Blackhawk properties, the biggest drawback was they were talking with the money. Bottom line, it was the money. It's $18 million more, from what I'm understanding. So you've already seen this in summary, but to just let you know, the recommendation after the, the meeting last Tuesday is that Blackhawk properties, they really want the construction to fit the children, right? They don't want, you don't want to give you a building and you have to try to fit the children in that. They want to create a building that the children will fit in and have a good educational environment. The other things that we were talking about is construction efficiency. So the construction process will not disrupt the students' education, sustainable future, and then obviously the community accessibility. Located near Time Warner, Westmont High School, Westmont Junior High, you know, so it's very collaborative and convenient. So our recommendation after these meetings is definitely the Blackhawk properties. Your challenges, again, are going to be talking about traffic flow as well as the cost. It is an investment. Any questions? Well, thank you again for the opportunity. I wish you the best luck in your upcoming referendum. But I think you're definitely, I can commend you as a board that you're doing the due diligence. There are some naysayers out there and there's always going to be, but you're at least allowing them the opportunity to speak. And I think that was a really good thing. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, your time.
Any other comments that you guys, as board members, want to speak on regarding the location thing?
Like an official decision, like will we sold out the lot? Pretty sorry.
We can't, we can't purchase the properties until we have the money. So.
One of the things that already the location committee was that the boarders, and we heard too, that they wanted to know, it was just like, I guess, what's not this?
I think. We will have to start talking about if we want to move forward with architecture or. Yeah. I think it's, some of it comes from us and setting, you know, we've always said, and we said with the location committee, that the community, we want to influence the community and taking that into consideration of what we are going to promote and making that decision. I think, you know, some of that is taken out from here. We've had this. It's something I propose and we can change that proposal, however you guys want it. But I think taking this information, taking it in as a board member and maybe by our next meeting, having the board's proposed location after that. So that's something, you know, we can kind of take, but I, that will be my proposal, that we have time to take this in, ask for the questions from ourselves, but at our next board meeting, giving our proposed, and it's a decision, it's a vote, whatever you call it, it's the board's plan to move on and saying, this is the, this is what we are aiming for, this is the location we're going for. As we continue to get information and gather information for this referendum. But that's what I'm suggesting. Our next board meeting is.
January 28?
January 28. So at that point, I'm suggesting that we declare it at that time, is that, is our aim. We do have to be clear. Yes. We have to be very clear. Us saying as a board, we want to go after this, we want, we want it to be at this location, doesn't mean. Doesn't, doesn't mean we get it in, doesn't mean we close a deal there.
Right. Doesn't mean that something doesn't change. Yeah. Between now and the timeline decision can be.
Yes.
Right. I think it's important, the language that we use. I think. This is the location the board prefers.
Yes.
Our intentions. This is the location that the board currently intends. Those are, and I don't, it's not, it's not in men to sound wishy-washy. It's just the truth. It's just the reality that the board can say, aye, that's what I want, that's what we want, that's what this community wants. Whatever. It's another thing entirely to fast forward to the point where you actually can make a choice, make this entering to negotiations with someone, maybe in city.
Actually purchase.
Actually purchase something.
Is it something we talk more about in closed session?
The actual purchase of the property, yes, and the ongoing negotiations is a closed session discussion.
We have an opportunity for that before we make this.
Yeah. Right, and it's, so we, we don't talk about like the negotiations of that. But we can say, as we give information out to our community, we can say that like Carlos was saying, that this is a preference that we, this is a preference that we had. So, you know, that was one of the things that the community mentioned, like, we don't know where, you know, what the board wants. I think carefully stated that we're saying, this is the preference that we have. I think we're, you know, always looking at options. We have to consider that in negotiations.
Very simply, I just want to talk to you right about it. Like, are we going to get that opportunity?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the other.
Recommendation, we've had all this, like.
Now, the thing that.
I think, I think to make clear, I just want to say this as an example that came up in a community, in a location committee meeting, was that it's, it's real estate. And keep that in mind, this is real estate. I've definitely been a part of that process, that I had many preferences and aims to get a property and it didn't work. So we, we have to remember that, that still, that doesn't go away because it's.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's a board and then.
Whether we state it or we don't state it, it's, it's the truth.
Right.
That's the way it works.
The other part of it is that, that other part of that negotiation and how we work this out and how it goes, a lot of those details has to be handled and closed. But the other part of it is, even though that's a preference, we can't do anything until the referendum is passed. So that's, as far as funds being spent or, you know, paying for that, it won't happen until we have that passed by the community. So. Now, the, the piece that we, that we do need to talk about, if we decide, if we move forward and like, hey, we intend on this piece, is we do have to decide if we want to start the architects moving. And there is a cost there. And the cost benefit on that is, and, and maybe if they can be at the next meeting to speak to if it's even possible for us to still hit our original target deadline and ideal bidding time? That, because they had, because we were talking like eight, eight to nine-ish months for design phase, which was originally kind of thought that it would start about now. And that design phase costs $200,000 roughly, so that they can start that, that process. And there's, if there's any possibility that we get through that design phase and we're still able to hit that, that, that ideal bidding.
Period or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aggressive, that aggressive bidding deadline, so that we can get as close to that $600. Or if that's like, we're not going to hit that for 2020, seven, six or.
Twenty seven.
Yeah. Or like, or they're like, not even a chance, right? Then.
We know.
Then it's like, okay, I don't want to spend any money if it's not, you know, until this is, but, but that is the piece that moving towards a decision on the, on a location could potentially get us that, if we hit that. So that is something we should talk about.
So we'll invite the architect and construction manager to our 28 meeting to discuss potential timelines.
And I mean, if they can answer, if they can answer that, like, it's a pretty easy question, if they can answer that beforehand and like, just get it to us in our updates, like.
Just.
That could be better.
Right on. But that is the next, like, that is a money piece that we would have to vote on, that we could vote on prior to the referendum passing. Like, yeah, our vote isn't spending money at this point. Like, vote on a location isn't spending money. Right. And so that's why it's a kind of, and kind of the air quotes kind of thing. But it's still, it's basically, it's on straw, pool, whatever, what that board's preferences base, but definitely, yes, when we have to discuss if money is spent and we have that additional. And the more we kind of discuss it out and get answers back from our architects, the better we can deal with it. Any other questions or? We're going to go back to our first discussion item, which was budget staffing timeline.
So I added today the budget staffing timeline. It was something Mr. Baldorman and Dr. Braun worked on with the admin team. It kind of just outlines how they put together the budget from now until September, when it's submitted to the county, kind of breakdown of where things fall. Some dates are to be determined, that's kind of typical, just because it depends how the year is going, but that's in there. So.
Did anyone have questions or other dates or anything like that? Help, helpful reference.
Right. Have you seen this before?
It's every year.
We do see.
Yeah. Usually every year around this meeting. Dr. Brown, I did talk about maybe it should be moved into earlier, like December, maybe next year, so you guys have, before the year starts. Every year, it's fine.
We don't, I mean, we don't approve this. This is, this is FYI.
It's, yeah.
And no other questions? I'm going to keep them moving with superintendent's report.
So tomorrow, we need with all of our district personnel to do a mid-year report on progress and kind of a celebration of the past semester successes, which are plentiful, and is thanking our team for the great work they're doing. And then we do our annual review, our quality review coming up the following week. And then Dr. Brown will make that presentation. I don't think at the January 28th meeting, but at the following February meeting. So we are continuously tracking our student achievement, our attendance, which is outstanding at this point in time. We always want to continuously improve. But last year's attendance, as you know, was outstanding. It earned us a lot of accolades from the Illinois State Board of Education and our rankings. And we continue on that pace for this year. So it's two years in a row, really. And we track it at every administrative meeting, every other week. It's, the goal drives daily action. And we really are, have some of the best chronic absenteeism rates in the state of Illinois because of the support of the entire community, including our families. It's really important to get our students to school so they can take advantage of great educational opportunities. But it's also a product of the teachers building relationships and building a culture of engagement that students want to come to school. And let me tell you that there are many good schools and districts in the state that are working very hard, this is very important to them, and their chronic absenteeism rate is twice what our people. We're trending in that seven to eight percent range. So we're statewide, the averages are out 20. Good question, please. The data, just sure, because I know my child missed a lot, a lot of days, uh, still being out sick in December. And I know that there are a lot of people that are sick, adults and kids. So I'm curious, does the data, do the data include December? Yes. Because if we're still trending like we were last year, given what's going on right now, it's pretty, it's beyond impressive. Yes, it's updated every two, well, they track it every day, but we get a report every two weeks. So, yeah. And then we did preliminary reporting on achievements through the eye-ready testing. And we had tremendous progress last year. And we're tracking the same kind of growth. So we'll report that out to all the district employees tomorrow afternoon. And then we'll do the quality reviews the following weeks, maybe with every school from south to the high school, everybody between, about an hour and a half session of just really looking at our targeted goals, scrutinizing every piece of that, tracking our areas of growth and where we need to get even stronger. And then we'll bring that to the board in February. But preliminarily, I am so, we're getting great data, but we have more work to do. We're, it's like having a big lead at halftime. You got to keep pushing and push the pedal through the floor to continue this. But I'm unbelievably proud of our teacher staff and students and support from our whole school community. But they are really working very hard. It's very evident. And it's not just an opinion, it's the results from attendance data, discipline data, citizenship, if you will, and then the interim assessment data. So it's all measurable. It's all, yeah. And then it's all aligned to the school report card, where was we excelling? And we're going to continue. And we're going to continue to do that, but we've got more work to do. But at the midpoint, it's quite excellent. With more work to do.
He said that Dr. Brown is going to.
Show presenting, yeah, so the sequence is we present the preliminary data celebrations to the entire district staff tomorrow. And we ask everybody to be there, every staff member. We do the junior high, or excuse me, we do the high school, Miller and Manning. And then because of the schedule, then we do the junior high a second. And South kind of has to straddle it two times because of their dismissal. And then Carl and I will meet with the administrative teams and leaders and some coaches from every building. Um, in about an hour and a half review of the data session we call quality review. And then we take that data and bring it to all of you in February.
As we like start to approach reminding the board of our, I like, this is part of our evaluation and evaluation. We hear the data, we get some of that and consider it as we evaluate every year. Take any other questions for our day? Going to move on to our board reports. Um, I am, I would like to thank um Illinois State Board of Education. Again, at our last meeting, we were uh speaking of the Thomas Lee Borrows Award and going out to the Illinois State Board of Education's board meeting. Um, and so I received the honor there uh December eighteenth, um nine A M. Um, in front of the board members and they gave a wonderful um resolution um that I thank them for. Um, and thanking our team actually for um celebrating our board through me and still saying that, that the wonderful things that we did. But it brings an award back to Westmont, um, something else that shows how hard we work and we continue to work. But I'm sorry I didn't bring the award here because it's actually really nice. So. I do want to share it, but I'll bring it in that sign so it's seen. But um, I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank ISPE for that award and thank, you know, the whole team and community for that. All right. There's no public comments um for future meetings and events. Um, there's no school on January twentieth, Martin Luther King Day. Um, so we should be celebrating hopefully with a day of service if people can. Um, and then our next board meet, meeting is January twenty eighth, six thirty. That will be a village hall. Sorry, I kind of skipped past board reports where there are any other. At this time, we're going to re-enter into closed session. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to enter a closed session to uh discuss personnel issues. Only student discipline and seller Lisa Rim property at this.
Summer.
Second.
Roll call.
This is Cunover?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Redo.
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Doctor Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Merron?
Yes.
And then we are in the same room, but we'll return to open just to close. Um, this meeting. Thank you.